Yeah, can you, we want to start with roll call?
It's on the top. Go ahead and read it if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
Notice, notice. Notice this meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 69453, subdivision E of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950 at SEC, Series Resolution Number 2021101, and the Federal Americans and Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom meeting information was on the posted agenda. Remote public comment is also available by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Include the agenda number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written communications into the record. It's specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the committee and kept on file as part of the official record of the meeting.
Yep.
I will call the roll. Committee Member Cerny.
Present.
Committee Member Sasser. Committee Member Sasser is absent for the record. Committee Member Steely.
Here.
Committee Member Viera. And Chairperson Valencia.
Here.
Appointments, so we need to appoint Chair and Vice Chair for the next calendar year?
Yes, Chairperson Valencia with the appointment of Committee Member Viera and Committee Member Steely. Each year after new appointments, we appoint a new mayor and vice mayor, excuse me, a new chairperson and vice chair, sorry.
There's a lot of movement going on, so it wouldn't surprise me at this point.
So this evening, we just want to recognize the appointments of Rosalinda Viera and Joshua Steely and ask that you appoint a Chair and Vice Chair.
Yeah, so I did it last time or last go around. I think I was Vice Chair the year before that, so if one of you guys want to do it, Mr. Cerny, I know you've been.
I'll defer.
Okay. I mean, you really just have to run, if one of you wants to be Chair or Vice Chair.
Okay.
Okay. You want to be Chair? Okay, so I'll do Chair and then, then you want, okay, so I can't make a motion to make myself Chair, right?
I can.
Yeah, so if we want to.
You'll be Chair again.
A second.
Committee Member Cerny.
Yes.
Committee Member Steely.
Yes.
Committee Member Viera.
Yes.
Chairperson Valencia.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
I'd like to send it to Steely.
I'll second.
Committee Member Cerny.
Yes.
Committee Member Steely.
Yes.
Committee Member Viera.
Yes.
Chairperson Valencia.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
City Communication, I don't know if anybody's on Zoom, like anybody's, nobody's here, so. Okay, so it won't be long. The consent calendar. Do we need to go back and approve from the previous meeting? I'll make a motion to approve the posting from the last meeting? And the meet, and what was that? In the minutes, yep, we'll make a motion to approve both those items.
A second.
Committee Member Cerny.
Yes.
Committee Member Sasser. Vice Chair Steely.
Yes.
Committee Member Viera. Chairperson Valencia.
Yes.
Motion pass four zero.
Moving on to new business, overview of Measure H Committee. I think we, for the new members, we saw the packets. We just want to address their review, any questions you guys might have?
I can do a brief overview of the Measure H in the committee.
Awesome.
So Measure H, as you all know, is a half-cent sales, sales tax, sales and use tax that was voted on by the voters passed in 2007, and it was added to the municipal code as Chapter 3.1. There is an expenditure plan attached to the ordinance that may be amended by the City Council as long as funds are, as long as funds are utilized for police and fire services. The key phrase in the ordinance states that revenues collected hereunder shall supplement rather than supplant existing expenditures for public safety. What this means is that we cannot use the Measure H funds in place of general funds, but we, but we must use them in addition to general funds. Section 3.1 of the municipal code established the Citizens Oversight Committee, and the purpose and jurisdiction of this committee is to review expenditures of the revenue collected to determine whether such funds are expended for the purposes specified. The section also states that the committee shall meet semi-annually or as otherwise needed, and that we follow the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. That's just a general overview of the Measure H and the committee.
And when does it sunset?
There is no sunset.
Okay, so it'll keep going?
Yes.
They keep going.
Any question? We're going to move on to the next item. The physical year at budget report.
Okay, so the next one is the fiscal year 2021 year and budget report, so that was the budget that ended June 30th. There's nothing to view, okay. So just an overview of last year's budget and how we ended up. Sales tax revenue, we received $4.5 million, or 128% of what we had estimated. Revenue exceeded the budgeted amount of 3.5 at the end of the year by over $1 million, and we are expected to have an ending fund balance of approximately $1.7 million. Yeah, we got, we got a little more sales tax than we thought we would.
Gentlemen. Was there anything specific that was driving that increase?
Not that I know of. I couldn't pinpoint anything, so.
Awesome.
Expenditures through June 30th were $3.7 million, or 98% of what we budgeted. We don't anticipate any additional expenditures since we have, we're almost done closing out the books. However, these aren't audited numbers, so the auditors may find something.
Where do we typically like to be, I forget, in terms of like a buffer? Because there's usually like a little buffer, right, in terms of?
For Measure H, we shouldn't, there shouldn't be, like, the general fund has reserves, you know, but the Measure H, you should use everything that's coming in.
Right, so that was pretty close.
Police expenditures totaled 2.1, so they came in at 95% of the estimated 2.2 that we budgeted, and fire came in at 1.6, which was, they, they came in a little over what we had estimated for them to spend. In total, police expenditures were 57% of what we budgeted, and fire was 43. And that's the end of the 2021 budget report. But we didn't.
I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion to, we need a motion to approve. Yeah.
Committee Member Cerny.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steely.
Yes.
Committee Member Viera.
Hi.
Chairperson Valencia.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
So moving to approval dates for 2022. Do we have any proposed?
I still have item five, presentation of the current year budget.
Yep, go ahead.
We have a PowerPoint.
Yep.
Yours is sharing right there.
Right, next slide, please. Okay, so this is a overview of the general fund budget. And we have a beginning balance of $6.9 million with projected revenues of $25 million and projected expenditures of 24.5, with an ending fund balance of 7.4, which is with the 30% reserves. So that's the, the general fund. The, the current budget does not include any of the ARPA funds. We are expected to receive $11.6 million from, from the American Rescue Plan Act. We received 5.8 of it this year, and we'll receive the other 5.8 next year, and we'll have until 2024 to spend those funds. So those have not been included in the current budget. Revenues are projected to be slightly above last year, and expenditures, we have, we will have a slight increase in expenditures this year due to negotiations of salaries, additional positions, higher retirement and health insurance costs, and higher workers' comp and public liability insurance. Thanks. So the Measure H pays for eight police, police officers and seven firefighters. Now that we are contracted with the city of Modesto, since we are still paying for employees' services, we are allowed to spend Measure H funds on the contract. And we, we are still responsible for fire apparatus upkeep, the repayment of the loan for the fire apparatus, utilities on the buildings and, and the built, the fire stations themselves, we are still.
The operational cost.
Yes, right. And then we are expected to see a slight increase in revenues for this year also. This one we can't read. That one's hard to read. This one, this slide just gives a, a look of the past two previous years. The yellow is the current fiscal year, and then the two coming up years. So it's, it's like a five-year overview of Measure H. So for this year, we are expected to bring in revenue of $4.3 million with expenditures of 4.2, within estimated ending fund balance of $1.7 million. That's the thing, I think that, yeah, that's just. So for 2021, our total proposed general fund expenditures, again, are 24.5 million. Personnel costs are 71% of that, or 18.9, with the Measure H total expenditures will be $30.8 million. Include public safety, is police-fire code enforcement and animal control. And Measure H pays approximately 79% of the total general fund in Measure H budgets. I think that's it. And you also have in your packets details of what Measure H is paying for this year.
Thank you. I don't, do we need to make a motion to approve that as well, or no? Okay. I, I don't have any questions.
Because I couldn't go away. All of the same from.
Item six is committee approval of the 2022 meet. Committee bylaws require that the Measure H Oversight Committee meets twice per year. First mandatory meeting is right after annual budget, and then the second one after the completion of the fiscal year audit for the Measure H revenues and expenditures. The Measure H Committee customarily meets three times per year. Those months are in March, May, and September. This, for next year, we are proposing meeting March 16th. That's one of the mandatory meetings, May 18th and September 22nd, 21st, excuse me.
And I have no.
I don't know that I do right now so far out there. Yeah, I mean, that seems fun.
And.
Unless I have soccer practice and forget to show up. Sorry about that, by the way. Juggling a lot of things, it's, it's tough. I get calendars. Okay, we, so I'll make a motion to approve the proposed dates.
Committee Member Cerny. Vice Chair Steely.
Yes.
Committee Member Viera. Chairperson Valencia.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Keep calling.
Yes, I have a very brief report on some of the expenditures that we view Measure H for, and we will continue to use Measure H for big-ticket items, one-time purchases, depending on what the revenues look like next year. I would like to examine hiring two additional police officers to start up street crimes units way in the future.
How is the hiring going up since last, I know you were?
The struggle, it's just a constant struggle. Yeah, we, we get officers, we look officer. Fortunately enough, we were to retain one officer who was looking to leave. I think we're going to lose two more. One just notified me today, last date. So hiring for police and is very, very challenging, not only in series, but for every police agency in this county. I'm a sports guy, so it's like a free agent market right now. Whoever has the Yankees or the Dodgers' pocketbooks is going to win.
Right. Is there, I know last time when we were, you were talking about that, this was probably a while back, when, as far as like anything else to like keep people, I mean, obviously everybody, money is, is it driving for everybody, right, for money? But is there, was there any, I, I know when you, we were talking about like the, the people coming up through the cadets, through the programs and sponsorships, there's, how, how long those, those folks tied up for, contracted for to stay, and?
Well, normally, when we put them through the academy, we ask them to be your commitment to us.
Right.
What are those are binding is for legal opinion.
Sure.
And that's an option that we can explore in the future, starting to sponsor people to go to the academies, and we keep and retain. One of the things that was a major issue for us was compensation. That is, that is why we were able to keep one of our officers who was going to leave, and the other work environment that we create here at the department, our, our people by and large really enjoy working for the serious police department. Compensation have been addressed now, so I think we retain who we have, minus the two who are not leaving for compensation issues or even for other issues that have no control over.
Sure.
And I think we'll be able to attract people now that we've addressed the compensation issue and retirement issue that we had before.
Awesome.
So before you, I'm not sure if you have the list, but just a couple of items that we've purchased with Measure H funding. It's an investigative tool called Cellhawk, and without giving up trade secrets, it's just a very, very good tool to have to use for cellphone analysis.
Is it an application or is it an actual tool?
An actual tool, application, software, cloud-based. We plug in information, it gives us information, and it's very, very helpful in solving crimes.
What are the rules on that? In terms of, you know, you want access to my phone, is that?
It's all subject to search warrants, yes.
Did, I see some like software stuff, and did you end up finishing up that, that one software for the license plate reader that you were looking at?
No, that, that is on the list that we are trying to do. We ran into some, just not logical, I would say legislative things with some of the LPRs that we want to put in our intersections. And a lot of the LPRs, license plate readers, that's what it stands for, come with facial recognition. And that is something that the courts are trying to weed through right now, and we now have ARPA funds that we can utilize some of that money to expand the footprint of our LPR system throughout the city. You go through Modesto, Riverbank, even Houston, Waterford, they have them with the flashing blue lights.
Yeah, I was going to say, I see them in Modesto everywhere.
We are way behind the curve for LPRs.
Is, was that the same thing that you mentioned that the Sheriff's Department was making a big purchase on the, trying to?
Yes, we were trying to get on their contract, yes, to do economy of scale, hoping to get a lower price point per unit that we would purchase. I'm not sure where they are in their purchasing, but it's still something that we're going to examine, either whether we can get on their economy of scale or not. So that is, that is the last thing that I have on there. We used $10,000 to purchase a high-tech crimes computer specifically used for forensics, digital evidence, that it's either widely known or deeply hidden in the computers that we examine. Those computers are designed to extract that information. They're not cheap, highly effective. And a rather large purchase that you're going to see is $135,000. That is the continuing contract for Exxon, which does our body-worn camera system, our TASER system, and it's a really robust system. I would say that Exxon is probably the leading vendor when it comes to body-worn camera technology, and they continue to add, grow that officer safety program. We get unlimited storage of data. The amount of data that we're capturing on body-worn cameras out there in the field is tremendous. We don't store the data, which is good for us because the servers would just.
So that's part of the subscription?
That is part of the subscription, and twice a year, or I think it's two and a half, at the fifth year, we get renewed equipment, send it all back. They give us new stuff, all part of the program.
Like a hardware as a service?
Yes, it's hardware, software, cloud, storage, all included in the program. For an agency our size, the amount of data that we're having, it, it sticker price is shocking, but it's worth, well worth it. And the last thing we're going to use, it's called Dragon, and what it is, is a dictation software that allows officers to dictate, speak into a microphone in the field, in cars, and that report directly goes into our CAD arm system for the sergeant to review. He or she reviews it, it dumps into our CAD arm. You don't have to scan it, which is sufficient for our record staff. They don't send it electronically to the DA's office. It also gives us the ability to run license plate through the microphone. So if I were to say, run California license, ABC123, it's automatic. The officers don't have to take their eyes off the road, manipulate the computer. $25,000 price tag comes with the equipment, the training, the software, the phones.
And that covers?
Sorry?
That's for everybody?
That's for units. It's the amount of unit that we have and several workstations that we have inside the building.
A quick question on the Exxon. Is that, I know the initial sticker price, is there an annual cost?
No. It's a, it's a five-year contract, so that's what the $135,000 is, but we break it up over time. If I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Letitia?
Yeah.
Like a quarterly bill, but the initial price tag is $135,000.
And that covers five years?
Yes, five years.
Yes, they're like the standard Exxon is.
I would say they are the industry standard when it comes to body-worn camera technology. And that is all I have for my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have. Have an estimated timeline on, you might be able to get back to street crime? That's going to depend on a lot of things. First and foremost, our patrol staffing, the most important. I don't want to take away from patrol to spin up a street crime unit. We've done that in the past, didn't work out very well. It lowered morale, it overworked our people. If we can retain, track, and keep officers and put officers in various, I'm more than happy to do that. I won't suffer, I won't pull on the backs of patrol to make that happen. It's done correctly, it has to be done, it's to be done efficiently. That's all going to depend on if we can attract people quickly, candidates who beat the, the needs and the goals and standards of serious police. It's, I want to do it, I want to do it quickly, but I'm not going to just do it with anybody.
Are you still considering the, the cameras for like the parks?
Yes, will be part of the intel site, unfortunately.
Oh, they're tied together, they're, they're tied together on that?
Yes, that's in part of Intelis, Intelisite, that's part of that whole campus-wide thing, and I think that it included in ARPA, and ARPA money spending plan to some of those cameras in our high areas that have vandalism and or.
Is that, that's something like Ripon and Mestod?
Yes. We have a tremendous vandalism problem in our parks. Youngsters, it's fun to go out and destroy sprinkler heads. About $2,500 a pop to replace. Need to do something to be able to combat that, and the camera system would help us in the right.
Absolutely.
An armed aerial drone with cameras in?
I, I don't have that in front of me.
It was just like, it's like. It just said a drone for 3,000. I know you guys had one. This was in addition to.
Yes, we have a drone program, and we have several aircraft. We probably are going to add to that. And what we found is we, we were initially going to use the drones as eye in the sky, per se, so that our officers wouldn't have to get into vehicle suits, speed around town, people in harm's way. What we found is, we can use them for more, then we use them on our SWAT callouts, we use them, search forms, thrown up, and we can stand back from a distance. We have TVs to monitor that stuff, and they've done a really, really good job. So much so that other agencies that have drone programs, maybe they're not available at the time, will call us for assistance. We continue to add to that program to make it as robust as we can.
I don't have any other questions? Thank you, Jeff.
All right, good evening, Chair and members of many, first, my name's Alan Erz. I'm proud to serve our chief, not only for the city of Modesto, but for the city of Series, city of Oakdale, and the Oakdale Fire Protection District under regionalization effort that we've been underway for, for several years now. This, I'm new to this, this is my first meeting too, so I figured it'd be good to do an introduction and give you just a brief example of the contract for service agreement that we have. and give you just a brief example of the Contract for Service Agreement that we have with the City of Series. Um we started this contract in August of this year, so we're only a few months into it. Uh the transition went very, very well with the employees. All all the employees came over as City of Modesto employees. Um these contracts are unique in that we want to make sure we protect the identity of the communities that we serve. And so the facilities and apparatus and equipment all remain property of the City of Series. And um and then the employees come over. So basically, what we serve is an operational and administrative service to the City of Series. Um by finding efficiencies in the administrative component and the operational component, we're able to um provide a service in the fit and find um fiscal efficiencies there to where we can add service. So for example, with this Contract for Service, um we were able to add a fourth firefighter to the ladder truck. That's normally stationed at Station Eighteen, that the City Series didn't have prior, and we were able to add um paramedics to um the station right behind us at Station Fifteen for for an advanced life support service. Um so we're very excited to be here and partnering with Series in this effort. It's it's been, regionalization isn't easy, it takes a lot of people to agree to a path and partner together, and we're proud of that relationship we have with City of Series. Um it was an excellent uh question, I think, was brought up at the last scheduled meeting about the funds, Measure H funds, and Contract for Service Agreement. And uh, you know, I, Letitia had answered it, that it can be spent because of the services that we provide for the City of Series. Um I don't have any expenses as of yet, um because we're just getting our feet under us um for this, but I know, I know firefighters, and they always find a need for something, so.
Hey, those new trucks, I, one drove by me today, that thing's nice.
Yeah, they turned out very nice.
Nice.
Yeah.
So sweet.
So the equipment you have is excellent. You know, there's been a little, little um hiccup in getting them here and getting everything correct and operational, but uh the good news is we have pretty much a new fleet of equipment, and firefighters are happy, and it's providing a good transportation to and from emergencies for us, so.
I've got a long do.
Yeah.
Um in terms of expenses, um expenses, is, do you have, are you forming like a committee through Series in terms of what the needs are? I know you you mentioned everybody's gonna have needs, right? But i- is, how are you gonna take that information and kind of formalize your strategy for for the next budget year? Um have you thought of what is you're gonna do? Cut through?
Yeah, so specifically, the Fire Service Agreement, we have an advisory committee that's made up of stakeholders from each agency, and then we would get together and, and the nice thing about the contract for, for an example, for contracting city like Series, is the costs are set at the beginning of the contract. So for five years, you know what those costs are, so you can budget accordingly for those. The costs that come up, in addition to that, would be the normal maintenance and uh facility needs, apparatus, equipment that the City of Series still owns. So for these particular items, when when there's a one-off outside of the salaries, contract costs, um we'll put together, um we'll work with that advisory committee as well, recommendations for facilities. I know there was, there was already a potential request for um upgrading um the workout equipment in the in the fire stations that are, that is outdated. So to the, and then we're doing a lot of work out at the training site up at, well, City Station Seventeen. So there's some items there, a new on training tower that we're putting together. So those are the type of items that will most likely would come from the, you know, the one-off expenses outside of the salaries and through the contract.
And then as far as like overtime and things like that that come up, can it, can it still be covered? Or is it covered through the Measure H funds? If it exceeds the contract? Uh contracted amount?
Per our contract, if the overtime exceeds at City of Modesto, it it is that. Yeah, we're obligated to that. So we set a set price.
Sure.
Um and, you know, it's my job to make sure that we, for the City of Modesto, that we.
Right.
And then that budget.
Sure.
I won't be a fire chief for long if I don't, so.
Um, okay, interesting, okay. Cool. Um, yeah, no, I'm I'm just interested to see what else you guys can, I mean, like I said, the trucks look awesome, and ha- have we seen any, any, I mean, I know it's only been a couple of months, but in, I don't know how the holidays are, I'm sure it gets pretty busy for you guys. Have we seen any decrease or any issues with like in terms of reporting and getting out to to certain requests and things like that within the city?
No, you know, I think we've, the transition's been very well between the departments, and we're doing a lot of code enforcement, or working with code enforcement now, the fire prevention side, the shop, that was kind of lack, lacking in the past. And um and the crews, the nice thing, you know, we've had a resource sharing agreement for the last, since um two thousand sixteen, that we send the closest unit to any emergency, regardless of what it says on the side of the engine or on our shoulder. So the operational change wasn't greatly um impacted. But the, we have seen is the, is the sheer manpower that we can dedicate into the, into Series. Um for an example, there, they, a fire over off Brewmaster Drive just the other night, commercial um fire, and within eight minutes, we had five engines, two ladder trucks, and two chief officers there, and we're able to contain the fire. And that just, you know, even the City of Modesto would struggle on our own to provide that level of service, but by partnering these communities, we're able to do that. It's one of the advantages of the regionalization.
And then how about the the part, the prevention piece? What do you guys do as far as that? What it, what does that look like?
So we have um our Fire Prevention Bureau staff with, we have a fire marshal, deputy fire marshal, um a senior fire inspector, and six fire inspectors, one specifically dedicated to City Series. And so you, we have that upper level of administrative um piece from the fire marshal, um and then we dedicate the resource, um one individual, like I said, is dedicated to Series. But again, in this effort, we try to find the 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 most efficient way to handle business. So for example, the Walmart store opening was a priority. We could dedicate more of our inspectors down here for that particular task, just like if there was an event in the City of Oakdale that I needed to move personnel there for the day. But for day-to-day operations through the contract, there is one dedicated fire inspector here in City Series, and that's an additional service that wasn't here prior.
There's vacant for a while.
Question, Chief?
Yes.
A young person over here at Series High get involved? Program, they become so explorers for Series?
Correct, they, they would come into Modesto floors, and uh and we've incorporated the Series Explorer Program into our. And so um they have the same ability to join that, they could ride at Series Fire Stations um and be part of that. But the cadre of instructors that were part of Series Explorer Program have now um integrated it as well. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Like we got our first meeting.